Okay. Good evening. Good evening. It is? Okay. Doesn't sound it, but... No, it's not on. Pardon me? Okay. It's not on out here. No. So, I'd like to call the December 1st meeting of the Merrimack Valley School Board to order, please. And roll call? Here. She's excused.
Tom LaLiberty?
Here.
Melissa Muzzi?
Here.
Jessica Wheeler-Russell?
Here.
Laura Vincent?
Here.
David Nesbit?
Here.
Julia Jones?
Here.
Stacy Jarvis?
Here.
Lorna Carlisle?
Here.
Amanda Yor?
Here.
Okay. Pledge of Allegiance. Gail? Will you stop the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, the minutes from the November 3rd meeting were in the packet. I assume you all got to read them. Sally sent the grammatical corrections on. And anybody have any other corrections? So, moved by Julia, seconded by who? Oh, Amanda. Sorry. I heard somebody say it. Seconded by Amanda. All those in favor of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Next would be Finance Report.
So, the copy of the Finance Report is in there. There is a new line that is highlighted. It's the extended school year transportation. So, there are times when we don't get bills for transportation in a timely manner, so that's why that line is now increased. We still have the other function 1210, due to contracted pairs and professionals. And then, the 2162 function, which is on the top of page four, which deals with the physical therapy, the purchase services there for an increased need.
Anybody have any questions for Sam? I'll need a motion to accept the finance report. Moved by David.
Second.
Seconded by Julia. All those in favor of the Finance Report, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Sam?
So, Merrimack Valley is applying for a SAFE grant. So, between Fred and Karen, so Facilities and IT, there are three areas that they're looking at, which is access control, so adding some modules for doors, emergency learning, which would basically update the public address systems in all the schools. It would include, you know, where you can do focus paging, you'll be able to do real-time announcements if necessary, instead of just the alerts that may be going on, and then adding some outdoor cameras, along with updating some others. So, all told, for Merrimack Valley, we are looking at about $421,000 that we're applying for grants. And so, what I'm hoping for is that we can have a motion this evening to go after those grants and accept those funds.
421,000.
Right. It is a reimbursement grant. Thank you, Randy. So, we're gonna expend the funds, get reimbursed through the grant.
So, moved?
Moved and seconded. Moved by Laura, seconded by Jess. Any questions? Any discussion for Sam?
Have we already spent the money?
No.
We haven't? Will we spend it if we don't get the grant?
No.
Any other questions? Okay. No other questions then. All those in favor of accepting the SAFE grant? Say aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Perfect. Next, public comment. I'm seeing no public comment. Good news. So, the good news details were in the digital packet, but also Ken Fuller is here with a report from the Merrimack Valley Learning Center. Well, Ken's not making the report, but he can introduce everybody.
Hello? Hello? Okay. Okay. All right. So, for those who don't know me, my name is Ken Fuller. I am the administrator at the Merrimack Valley Learning Center. And when we signed up for this, wasn't quite sure what we're gonna talk about, but then when we brainstormed, Melissa Jones, who is our English teacher at the Learning Center, came up with a great idea to talk about our Thanksgiving festivities that we have with our students. And we also brought along Jason Lassard as a student to talk about it as well. So, I will pass it over to Mrs. Jones.
Good evening. I'm Melissa Jones. I'm the English teacher and one of the special education case managers at the Learning Center. First, on behalf of the students and staff, I'd like to thank the board for voting to keep our building and to invest in our program. As you've heard from community members, we've been able to help our students experience success and thrive after graduation when they might not have otherwise. We're excited to continue this important work and to expand the program to meet the needs of even more students. Tonight, I have two products to share with you. First is a presentation from my English 10 class. They created personal statements and interviews of students and staff of their experiences at MVLC. My students learned how to conduct interviews and how to correspond with potential interviewees. I have one of those students with me to give his statement in person. Second, I have a trifold about the best day of the year at MVLC, our annual Thanksgiving lunch. To start, I'd like to invite Jason Lassard to share his statement.
Good evening. My name is Jason Lassard. I'm a sophomore at the Merrimack Valley Learning Center. I started attending the Learning Center in my seventh grade year. When I first came here, I was an immature hot mess. Over my time here, I have learned to be more mature and to read my audience, knowing what a good time to say something was. For example, at the beginning of me going to school at the Learning Center, I may have spoke out of line, but now I know the appropriate time to speak. I've also learned good manners and that I've always struggled with before. But most importantly, I have made core memories with friends and teachers that feel like family. I want to thank the people who guided me through my high school and middle school career. The teachers who were here are a great help to me, and I wouldn't have made it to where I am today without the whole school. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. On the screen, you'll see some quotes and pictures from other students' interviews and personal statements. Here, we have Rhodey R. interviewed by Jacob. From his interview, he shared, "I've been here for about seven years. MVLC really helped me out in my time of need when I was just an angry kid. We're more of a family in this school than other schools. Staying here is keeping me in a good place to finish school." Michaela's personal statement shared, "At MVHS, I was anxious to go to school every day, so I didn't go. I started here at Merrimack Valley Learning Center 'cause I had truancy issues. I went from failing all of my classes to basically all As and Bs." Max's personal statement. "I think what makes the MVLC unique is that we all belong, even if we don't feel like it. I want people to know that MVLC is not the place that bad troubled kids go, but they need to know it's for kids who need more help." Matthew's personal statement. "When I first came here to the MVLC, I was very disrespectful and was rude to everyone. However, my teacher, Mrs. Woodward, helped me learn the proper etiquette to learn and respect the help I was receiving. One thing I wish everyone would know about the MVLC is the community and friendship opportunities. We became a close, tight-knit community. I wouldn't have it any other way." Amelia's personal statement. "Most of the teachers are very hands-on here, as well as helpful and supportive. They always answer questions and challenge us to think differently. We aren't bad kids. We just think differently, and no one at the normal high school understands us the way we need to be understood. That is why the Learning Center is a better fit, and we thrive there." Mrs. Woodward was interviewed by Max D. and shared, "What makes us work is that we're a small community, and we have the time and opportunity to get to know our students." Ms. Rachel was interviewed by Amelia. "Kids are more willing to open up to us because we are such a small community. And maybe for a lot of students, we are the most trusting adults they have in their life. I think that makes MVLC unique. The first, most important thing to us is, can you be a functioning human being after school, once you graduate? Are you going to go into the world and do good things?" And finally, Mrs. Wells was interviewed by Michaela. "I love MVLC's Thanksgiving lunch. I think it's a great way for us all to just come together like a family. We work on social skills and share what we're thankful for. It's been a longstanding tradition." Now, I'd like to share my trifold that I have about our Thanksgiving lunch tradition. On the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, our entire staff work together to create a family-style meal for our community. All the staff make and bring in the supplies and the fixings, and students and staff work together to set up and decorate the gym. This year, our middle school students made turkey box placeholders for everyone. I have Dr. Wormalds and Mrs. Mastersons with me. After staff serve the meal to our students and ourselves, we all eat together. This lunch showcases the best part of MVLC, the care, love, and community that makes us the MVLC family. On the trifold, you'll see images in the middle from past lunches and on the sides from our most recent lunch. In the envelopes, you'll find messages of thanks from students and staff. Thank you all again for your continued support of our program and students."
And I'll just leave the trifold here, and then you guys can take a look at it after, whenever you have a chance. Is there any questions? Anything else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was fabulous. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. It was great. Great to see all that good stuff happening. Next is the Student Rep Report.
Hello, everyone. I'm... He's on the outside today, so...
So, you get to go first?
Yeah, I do.
Nice.
As some of you may remember, last month, some of the kids from the elementary school came down to present their kid governor slideshow. And last month, on the 18th, Liv Crete Sawyer from Bosquin was officially chosen as the 2026 New Hampshire Kid Governor. Her inauguration will take place at the State House in Concord, January 27th. That's about it for the elementary, so moving on to the middle school. The National Junior Honor Society at MVMS visited the Veterans Cemetery to help clean up the walkways and, you know, rake all the leaves from the area, just to clean up a bit. We are proud to announce that the middle school musical, Seussical Junior, is being performed this week, December 4th to 6th, at 6:00 PM. I watched a preview of it the other day. It was very entertaining. I do recommend going. Tickets are available at the doorway. You cannot order them online. There are multiple Santa's Breakfast events this Saturday, December 6th. Pennycooks goes from 8:00 to 11:00, and Loudon Elementary's Breakfast and Craft Fair from 8:00 to 1:00.
Thank you, Silas. Now, it's my turn. Real quick, Seussical Junior will be hosted here at the high school auditorium. It will not be at the middle school. MVMS, we're back to them, hosted its annual Veterans Day Assembly. It was a meaningful opportunity for the school community to come together in honor and gratitude for the service and sacrifice of all of our veterans. I was lucky enough to be there with my scout troop to present the colors. It's always a great event. It's an amazing event put on by Mrs. Herman. Does a lot of planning over there at the middle school for that event. It's always very... Always very well-received, and there's tons of veterans in attendance for that. The middle school have its holiday band and chorus concert on December 9th at 6:00 PM here in the high school auditorium. That is December 9th, 6:00 PM. And then, December 11th is the high school's band and chorus concert, also at 6:00 PM in the auditorium. So, middle school, December 9th; high school, December 11th, both right here at 6 o'clock. The fall sports season is over, and we finally have all of our All-State results in, so we're very proud to announce a ton of All-Staters. For field hockey, first-team All-State Lauren Bailey; second-team All-State Hannah Dubuque; and then we had a few honorable mentions, Julia Michael and Abby Thompson. For boys soccer, second-team All-State was Jonas Weed, and then an honorable mention was Rutger Gililand. For girls soccer, first-team All-State was Jada Lucas, and then Ella Mercer was an honorable mention. And then, for girls volleyball, Mackenzie Shelby was selected to play in the senior All-Star game. Looking forward to winter sports. The tryouts are currently happening right now. I'm sure there's a bunch of basketball players in the gym trying out for the teams, and they'll be starting up right before you know it. I'll be up in the top of Leechers broadcasting. And then, band and chorus, we have a ton of All-Staters. We had a great group go to audition for All-State, and we got our results back. So, very proud to announce the following as All-Staters for the music department. Nathan Bayless, Grayor Chubb, Eva Kovatis, Rihanna Cruz, Abby Carey, Hannah Mason, Annabelle Mattie, Hannah Ober, Silas Raish, Mason Rowe, and Amelia Rowe. So, as you can see, we have a thriving music department. Like I said, a few months ago, on one of the last reports, there was like over 100 kids in the band at the middle school. We're gonna need an addition in our band room here, if all those kids stick with it, 'cause our band room could barely fit 60. So, we're gonna need to get that. But we have a very, very good music department here, thanks to all the teachers at the elementary schools, and of course, Mrs. Babcock and Mrs. Dean Tico at the middle school and high school. This program's really thriving in theater as well. And now, it's time for our jokes. I'm gonna do the first joke. Christmas jokes, 'cause we're in December already. What's an elf's favorite music genre? Rap. For our second joke. Why are Christmas trees bad at knitting? They always drop their needles. That's our report. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not sure how much they're going to be. They'll probably be under $10. I don't wanna say for certain, but you will buy those at the door for the Seussical.
Any questions for Silas or Nick? Okay. So, excuse me, I do need to ask for you all to add an agenda item that got left off. It was put on, then it got taken off, then it got left off by mistake. After return to public session, we need to motion to approve... Motion for the teacher contract. So, I need a motion for that, to add that to the agenda.
To add the agenda item?
Yeah. Moved by Jess, seconded by David. All those in favor of adding that after the return to public session, say aye. Any opposed? Abstaining? Okay, good. Thanks. Next is committee reports, long-range planning. Lorna? You added it for me, right?
So, basically, we just discussed the goals. Goal number one was transitions, promotions, community engagement, and we're trying to look for some metrics to measure that. And part of that would be that YRBS program. What does that stand for, again?
Youth Risk Behavior Survey. No.
I'm looking at the expansions that were talked about between inter-agency team to better meet the needs of students. We saw a video on that a while back, right?
Okay.
So, that was kinda like a repeat of that. Then, the second goal, basically, is business partnerships. We're trying to increase that with either job shadow or internship opportunities. And then, goal three is the development of the Merrimack Learning Center. And so, we're gonna... It says, "Determined that this committee will collaborate with the Finance Committee and be responsible for reporting out that progress on the goal." There was no public comment, and I think we were gonna meet not until May, the next time.
So, the goals, we've already voted on the goals. It's really the metrics that the long-range planning is working on. Questions for Lorna? Jess?
I do have one question. Was goal number three, was that supposed to be Finance or Facilities?
Facilities.
Okay. So, the notes are just...
Okay, so, we need to make...
Yeah.
We have to make a motion to have that changed in the minutes.
I don't know. We don't need a motion so much as...
To make that change from Finance to Facility.
We'll make that change. Yep.
That's why I was looking at it going, okay, maybe.
Any other questions for Lorna? Okay. Next would be Finance. Between Tom and Sam, I assume we'll hear from both.
Sam, you can fill in anything. I forget. So, I believe today was our eighth meeting that we had. We got two more to go.
Can you just move that a little closer and speak up? Just because I wanna make sure... It's hard for people to hear and hear that they are hearing it on the video, but only through the microphone.
Okay.
Make sure the microphone's on.
I think it is.
Okay, thanks.
So, I think today was our eighth meeting, and we have two more to go. We have one next Monday at 5:00, and we have one on the 15th, which is at 4:30. The 15th is a big one. We're gonna be voting on what we bring forward to the whole board, which would be, I believe, for the January meeting. We're looking at bringing forth three warrants, an expendable trust for maintenance, and an expendable trust for special education, and the warrant for the operating budget. Currently, right now, we are at a 3.49% increase from last year's adjusted budget. That is about $1.7 million. And three-fourths of that $1.7 million is health, dental, New Hampshire State Retirement, and Social Security, which we don't have a lot of control over. So, there's a little wiggle room in there, but I'm gonna say that if it goes down, it's gonna be minimal at this point. So, we're looking at about a 3.49 in that ballpark. I'll say the SAU has done a very good job of preparing a communication page that'll be on the website that really has different tiles that represents different functions of the budget. That will be released sometime, probably in January, I think is when it would start. That will be going out to families that will have static data, will have spreadsheets, and will have videos. So, I think it's gonna be very helpful to the community to see that and to help them self-educate themselves on the budget. But we are also going out into the community and answering questions. So, we have scheduled or had a meeting at Salisbury with the Select Board on the 19th of November, and we have three more planned. On the 9th of December, we're going to be at Pennycook, and we're gonna talk... Pennycook Elementary, and we're gonna talk with the Pennycook Village Authority, which I believe is gonna be broadcast by Concord TV. On the 10th, we're gonna be at Loudon, on the second floor of the town hall, and speaking with them. And on the 17th, we're gonna be at Bosquin, which is a Select Board meeting, and that one is at 6:15. Those are opportunities to share some information that we have, but it's also more important that we're listening to the community and getting their feedback. And that feedback will be brought back to the Finance Committee prior to the 15th, when we vote. Obviously, the Bosquin meeting will be after that, and right now, we do not have one scheduled for Webster, unfortunately, at this point. Hopefully, we will.
Webster's, the conflict with Webster's, it's the same meeting night as our board meeting.
Correct. Yeah. So, they gave a couple dates in January. We have a board meeting, obviously. It's the night we're voting. And then, the other one was, well, Martin Luther King Day, so I don't know what's going on there. So... So, we'll see. But haven't heard back yet. We've been going back and forth, and I sent the last one out and haven't got that one. Sam, is there anything I missed?
No. I think you nailed it.
Thank you. Okay. Questions?
Nailed it.
Yes.
You go first.
What?
We have some questions.
Yeah.
Maybe the same thing.
Lorna?
So, I just have a question on... We met in Salisbury, and there were a bunch of questions, and we said we were going to get back to the administrator. Have we done that?
Haven't yet, but I got it. And I communicated with her, said, "I'm getting your answers, and you will have them."
Okay.
Yep.
Jess?
Yeah. Could you just remind me the time and the date for the Bosquin meeting?
So, the Bosquin is on the 17th, which is a Wednesday night, and that is at 6:15. So, their meeting starts at 6:00, and she said, "I got you guys on the agenda for 6:15."
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Tom? Next is Policy. Melissa?
Policy has been very busy. We met on the 24th and worked through multiple policies. You have a number of them in your packet for first read, but I'm gonna go over them really briefly. The first policy in your packet is EBBCA, which is the use and location of the automated external defibrillators. This is a new policy in our packet. It will allow us to sunset or replace GBBGA, which does not appear to be in the packet, but it is an existing policy, and we would be looking to sunset that when we finally approve EBBCA. Oh, I didn't see it in there, so I missed it. Sorry, it's in the packet. I skipped it. We have... There was some legislation around wording of where AEDs are kept, and so, this policy would... It outlines where they're kept, how they're used, who can use... it outlines where they're kept, how they're used, who can use them. It raised some questions for the board on, you know, how many there are, where are they located. So we did get some of that follow-up information, but that's in there for first read. The only changes we made or edits we made were, um, cosmetic, like apostrophes. We did his/her, we changed to their, because that's our practice to make those gender neutral. And we rephrased something to make it a little more clear, but everything, like, the content stayed the same in the draft. So it's in there for first read for you, um, and again, it's a new policy. The next policy that we looked at was EBBB, a lot of Bs in there today, uh, accident reports, and this replaces a previous policy that provided a lot more detail. I'm sorry, this provides much more detail and aligns with these, uh, School Board Association recommendations. Our previous policy, I thought I had a copy of it, was very, yes, our previous policy was very, two very brief, um, paragraphs, and this one is more detailed and outlined to kind of go over some of the nuances in terms of how to report accidents and what constitutes an accident, and even where they happen. So a little more detail on that one. Um, we did clean up a little bit of the commas and stuff like that on that one as well. The next policy in the packet, uh, that we looked at, which we are not, sorry, it's not actually in your packet. Policy IKF we looked at, which is the graduation policy and academic requirements. We had some questions on that, that we needed some information from Curriculum Committee for, so we have scheduled a meeting for the 15th where, um, Curriculum, I believe, will meet before us, and we'll get to hear their presentation. So that will be on our agenda for our meeting on the 15th.
Eighth.
Sorry, I don't know where the 15th came from. Finance. Finance, sorry. The eighth, thank you. I didn't get that far on my list.
Okay, so when's Curriculum meeting?
Uh, Curriculum will meet at 6:00 for that meeting.
On the eighth?
On the eighth. On the eighth, and then we'll be meeting at 6:30 after their presentation. So, but Policy will be there for 6:00 so that we're hearing what's being discussed. The eighth.
We hadn't discussed that date yet
Oh, sorry.
With Curriculum, so that was, we were gonna do meeting dates after, after this. We were hoping
Surprise!
We could do Curriculum at 6:00 for a half an hour, so that, uh, both Policy and Curriculum can Finance? Finance is first, so they'll be done.
Will be done.
We could do Curriculum, but I have Policy there as well. We'll have a presentation from, uh, the high school administration.
Sorry, I jumped the gun on that one. Um, graduation policy is something that we would like to have ready so that, um, when they're building for next year's class coming into the high school, all of those information, all that information is up to date based on new legislation, um, and new requirements.
We're gonna change it now for Nick, right?
For next year.
Sorry, I was trying to make a joke, but we were gonna change it for Nick.
Oh, no. I wouldn't do that to you. I would not do that to you. So there's, there's more to come on that one, but, uh, that was a policy that we spent a little bit of time on and realized we weren't ready to bring it to the board, but it is coming. So I wanted to make sure I gave you a preview of that. Policy GBBB is in your packet. Um, it is the employee-student relations, um, just updated to align with the new, uh, legislation. Make sure I got the right one. We made very little changes to this one. There is a paragraph in the middle that was added, but, um, regarding the published emergency health and emergency protocols and policies. So there was something that needed to be added to the policy, so we did add that, but the rest of the changes are just commas and an "and." So the paragraph that says unless following a publish is the new addition to that policy. And then Policy IC, school year and school year calendar. Um, this was distributed. We are also looking at that at our next meeting. We ran out of time. There was just a lot on our agenda that night. Um, so we will be discussing that, um, at our next policy meeting, so Policy IC. And I think there was no, oh, and that would potentially sunset ICA, Policy ICA. So just so you know, got some things coming. We really had a lot on the table, and there's more to come. So, there's lots of legislation that we're still addressing. And yes, our next meeting for Policy is the eighth. We did agree to that at our meeting.
Are there any questions for Jessica?
Melissa?
I mean for Melissa. I was looking at Jessica. Melissa, yeah, go ahead, ask her.
Yeah, you could ask Jessica, too.
Any questions for Melissa? Okay, so then why don't we, uh, talk about, um, setting some dates?
Yes. Sorry.
So Sally is not here, right? She's Curriculum.
Yeah.
She isn't, but she's also Policy, so when this came up at Policy, we do know that Sally is available to attend
Okay.
On the eighth, at, at 6:00. And our hope was that Curriculum can just be short to hear the presentation from the high school. We have, have a conversation there, uh, and should Curriculum be on board with the changes that are being made as a result of legislation, it's the, um, updates from the Ed 306 laws, then Policy could tackle, uh, IKF immediately after that Curriculum meeting.
So, Curriculum will be, oops, yeah. Curriculum will be at 6:00 on the eighth, and Policy will be at 6:30, and Finance is at 5:00
Yep.
On the eighth. So Finance, Curriculum, then Policy.
Is it possible to phone in for that meeting? I'm, I don't think, I don't, I think the policy, it has to be approved by everyone on the committee.
I don't know.
And I don't know that the person who phones in can count towards the
The person who can't count towards a quorum.
Right.
I do know that much. If Zoom, if the person calls in, they don't count towards a quorum. So we'd still, so we still, we would still need a quorum, but, yeah, we can try and set that up. But we couldn't have, like, you know, three people calling in or whatever, because then we wouldn't have a quorum.
Right.
But, yeah. And the person who calls in doesn't get to vote. They do get to speak, but they don't get to vote.
I think they do get to vote with a roll call. I believe they do.
I think if it's approved by everyone on the
I don't know.
I'm just gonna be out of state, so I was hoping
Yeah.
It sounds to me like maybe a question should be asked of legal
Yeah.
Because in previous years, we were not allowed to vote unless legislation has changed since
I don't know that the legislation has changed, though. I'll, I'll check on, I can check on that, but you can, either way, you can be there.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. Okay, uh, new, we have no old business. Whoop, whoop. Uh, new business, Kathleen?
We had a resignation from a math teacher at the high school, Keegan-Rooks. Um, he resigned with very little notice and has already left. We have started, uh, looking for a replacement.
And we did ask him to pay. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And I will get that.
Thank you.
So is it just a sub right now?
Uh, yes, right now.
Advertising for a long-term sub?
Advertising for a teacher for the remainder of the year, yes.
Good luck.
If anybody knows anyone.
It's a hard one.
Yes, it is.
I have a question. If you guys can't find, like, a teacher for that, are you just gonna go to, like, what we did last year with, like, Velax? Is that your plan, or do you have any sort of second option if you can't find a long-term teacher for that role for the rest of the year?
You have to ask Mr. Saint-Ange. I think we need to talk to Mr. Saint-Ange.
Yeah.
It's all pretty new.
Yeah, that would be something at the high school that they'd have to go through options. You know, you've probably seen some teachers taking on other classes and things like that.
It was the same students as last year that lost their math teacher.
Is it?
I know, it's horrible.
And they were absorbed into a different classroom.
That's very unfortunate. Very unfortunate. Okay.
Nobody needs math.
Listen, lady.
Say you'll never walk around with a calculator in your pocket. Now they make smartphones. He was wrong.
Sam?
Yes?
Did you want to talk about lunch prices?
Yeah, sure. Um, so back in August, the, um, the PLE tool, the paid lunch equity tool, was run. It recommended, I believe, a 91 cent increase to lunch prices. I believe that we started looking at recommendations of a 50%, uh, 50 cent increase and settled on, uh, a gradual 25 cents. So 10 cent initial, and then 15 cents in January. I was asked to provide some updated numbers, um, based on projections. And so, had the 50 cent increase happened back at the beginning of the school year, we'd be looking at about $45,000 more in revenue throughout the year. So really, part of this discussion, I think, and I know, Tom, that, that we discussed it in, in the Finance Committee, really centers around how the board wants to make a decision going forward. So I, I think that there are a couple of options. One, um, is that you could go with the recommendation of the PLE tool. You could have a policy. And I think that policy could be written to still provide the board with, with oversight. So I don't think anyone was looking to do a 91 cent increase, um, at the beginning of the school year, so I, I, but I do think that taking the PLE tool into account, um, can certainly help with the deficit to food service. Wendy Leclair reran the PLE tool right before Thanksgiving. It was recommending an 80 cent increase. And so, you know, whether the board wants to adjust what they're going to do in January is completely up to you. But I do think providing some, some notice in advance, it, so if we're not gonna accept the PLE tool, I think it'd be great to give families a chance to prepare for lunch prices for the following year if decisions were made in June for the following year for, for lunch prices. If, if that's something that the board wants to do, we could run the PLE tool prior to that meeting, and it would give us an indication. So really, we're basing stuff on, on what that tool gives us, and then looking at different revenue streams throughout. So, um, you know, there, there are all kinds of, of different things that we could look at. If, if you decided, you know, let's increase prices more significantly in January, uh, if you tell me what you thought that, that was, I could give you a real-time estimate. If that isn't something that, that you wanted to do, that, that's fine. We, we're set to increase it by 15 cents, um, for breakfast and lunch right now.
So, David, I will, can I ask, I'm gonna ask a question first, sorry. Do you know if the, um, New Hampshire School Boards Association has a policy around PLE?
I don't.
Okay.
I just made a note to look.
Okay.
Yeah, me too. I was just wondering.
I was like, mm, that sounds like something we should be looking into.
David?
Sam, are we talking about, um, if we hold off till next year, that essentially we'd be doing the new year and then the balance of that 91 cents? Would that be like one big hit? Is that, is that what we're looking at? No, I think if, if you're talking about for next school year, so you'd look at the PLE tool in, you know, we'd run it prior to the June board meeting. We'd come with, with what the number, what it recommends and what it means as far as, if you remember back in August, had we done the 50 cent, we would have had a, a credit where, for the following year. So all of that information would be provided, and then it would be up to, to the board to make a decision on, on actually increasing or not. Thank you.
Other questions for Sam?
So, uh, you can go, Jess.
Yeah, no, so I just wanna make sure I understand
Jess?
What you're saying about, um, June. So what you're proposing, just to be, be clear, or what you're discussing, is, um, that, say, in like May, you run the tool, and then by June, you run the numbers, which then smores could be going out to families by June 15th or so about what the year would look like. Is that kind of butchered thought process?
Yeah, so, so following the, the board meeting in June, yep, those lunch prices and breakfast prices could be, could be sent out for the following year.
Tom?
Could you just give a little recap of, it was 80 cents that, uh, the tool talked about, and we went what and what?
So the original tool was 91 cents.
Oh, 91 cents.
And then we talked about doing 50 cent increase, and then there were friendly amendments here, there, and everywhere. And so, uh, it, it settled down to a 25 cent overall, and I think a 5 cent addition to, to the milk price as well.
So is it 10 cents and 15 cents?
It's 10 cents currently, yep, and then 15 cents starting in January.
So if, if my memory serves me correctly, in one of our finance meetings, we run about $200,000 short of what it costs us.
On average.
Yeah. And it would be too much to ask in one sitting for them to increase. I'm gonna say 2 bucks to get us where we need.
Yeah.
So, but, but 50 cents would get us, you know, quarter of the way there, right?
Yes.
So.
Other, other questions for Sam? So right now, it's set to be, uh, 15 cents. The price will go up 15 cents in, uh, January. And I, we have, we have time to decide about next year, I guess. So, and I assume that Policy will look, yep, hold on one second, Amanda. Uh, Policy will look and see what the policy is around.
If there is one and ask some questions about that.
Okay. Amanda?
Can we have a discussion about increasing more than 15 cents in January?
We can.
Can I point and order that for a second?
Yeah.
We already voted on that as a board, so doesn't that mean that we have to vote on reopening that discussion?
Hmm. I believe Yeah. We would, it wouldn't be so much, we would add, we could add to it. It wouldn't be
We're certainly not taking away
We're not gonna take, yeah.
Right.
But I don't know that, I mean, Sam's on the, we have it on, under, we have lunch prices under the new business, so I don't think so. I don't think that we need to, like, open that up. We would just add.
If we're modifying a vote, is what I'm talking about.
I don't think we are modifying the vote.
We would be
I think it would be a new vote.
Okay.
That's what I think.
That was how I
Anybody else? Anybody wanna?
I think that, I mean, is my intention is to, uh, to increase the 15 cents.
So
So it would require a vote. She's right, I believe.
So you want to make a motion to open discussion to increase the prices of the 15 cents?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. So Amanda's making that motion. Anybody wanna second it? David's gonna second it. Alright, so we can discuss that now. And so, it'll be, so whatever we decide, so right now, it's still gonna be 15 cents.
My concern is that, you know, we're 66 cents short of what was recommended to make a difference earlier. We're just prolonging the inevitable of, and it's only gonna create a bigger deficit the longer we hold off increasing these prices. I agree, it's not fair to increase it to its fullest request that we're seeing. I do, I do think we should be coming in a little bit higher than 15%.
15 cents?
15 cents, yes, sorry.
Did you have something, did you have an amount you wanted?
I would be happy to see it go up at all. Um, I think the original, let me do some quick math in my head. Um...
Originally, we asked for, for 50 cents. The original was 50 cents, and then we, um, did a bunch of amendments, and it was 10, and it was down to a quarter, but not a quarter all at once. It was 10 and 15.
Okay. I would propose that instead of the 15 cent increase, we go to a 25 cent increase.
A 25 cent increase? So the motion, David, is that okay with you? As the seconder? 25 cents? The motion is 25 cents. So we'll discuss the 25 cents, um, for, to happen excuse me, in January.
A total of, yeah.
Stacy, yep?
So just to clarify, are you proposing that the total increase then is 35 cents?
No.
The total, yes, but the twen, so, for the year.
For the year.
Oh, yes.
Oh, for the year.
So the 10 cent and then the 25 is what, okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
I thought she was saying 35, and I was like, no, she's not adding, yeah.
25 cents in January. Tom?
Got it.
Sam, I'm gonna put you on the spot, and I apologize for this. Do you know what that roughly will mean?
So that would bring breakfast prices to $2. It would bring elementary prices for lunch at $2.85. This is in January. Middle school, $3.35. High school, $3.60. So for the last 102 days of school, I guess with no school tomorrow, it could be 103. But the last 102 days of school, that would But the last 102 days of school, that would have about an $8,000 increase to revenue.
Other questions for Sam, for Amanda, for the good of the order? If I see no more questions?
Before, can I just?
You can.
Yeah, and I, I don't know how to word this, but I think there's two phases here of where you want to be. And I know that that formula's going to change, but you're talking about $8,000 for, you know, two-thirds of the school year or so, right? I don't know if that makes much of a dent versus, you know, what does that mean in June when the Board goes and looks at this? I think the goal is to get closer, like Amanda said, but I don't know if another 10 cents is really going to make a difference because you're still talking about, overall, maybe a third of what that original request was. So maybe that number needs to be a little higher than a dime. So even if you went up another nickel, now you're at 12,000, right? So I don't know what's right, but I don't, I don't know if we're going to get there quick enough.
I just want to say that my issue is that I do believe that we need to increase our revenue from our lunch prices. And I, but we already voted at the beginning of the year to do 10 and 15 cents. I think at this time, to tell families that we're going to raise it another 10 cents is, I don't think it's fair to families. And I'm, to piggyback on what Tom said, $8,000 increase seems negligible to me at the expense of what we already voted on. So I would not be in favor of raising the price at this time. I think that we need to have a bigger discussion about next, for next year, what that price increase will be. And I'm thinking that it's going to be a bigger increase than what we've seen in the past, and I think it should be. So, anyway, Jess, and then Amanda.
I also am not comfortable with raising the prices right now, within just a few weeks of January, on families when, especially when what we're also not bringing to the table is the changes to aid recipients from both federal and state level. So I'm concerned about raising prices, you know, for a family of two by $144 a month, for, by a family of two, I mean, a family with two children, this close. And that, I'm thinking that, you know, visiting a policy would be the better move for planning out next year, rather than just pulling the rug out from under, from families right now.
Amanda?
Just doing some, you're, to start, you're eight, you said $8,000.
Sam did, yes.
That's total, right? Because we're, or is that, that's not just the 10 cent more that I...
So the $8,000 is based on over and above the already scheduled 15 cent increase?
Okay, so it is just the additional 10?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Julia called for a roll call vote for this, so I'm...
Could you restate the motion, please?
The motion is to increase the price of the lunch by a quarter, by 25 cents. Increase all the...
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Whoops, hold on.
I was just, the rephrasing, increase it to 25 cents.
Oh, increase it to 25 cents. Thank you. So increase it to 25 cents. If this does not pass, it will still be 15 cents.
Can I just ask a clarifying question?
You can.
Will we have, can we have further discussion after the vote on the lunch prices?
Sure. If you want to make another motion.
I don't, I got a suggestion.
Okay. Amanda?
My question's for Jessica. Jessica, just trying to make sure I understand where everyone's coming from. Where did, when you said 144 a month increase, what are you referring to?
Sorry, I'm going to say total. I calculated out five days a week, two children, 360. Well, it's about $144 a month in lunch prices.
Okay.
With two kids.
Okay, because I calculated at like a $10 a month increase.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Two high schools.
Okay. Lorna?
I'm still trying to get this straight in my head. So we're looking at 25 cents instead of 15 cents?
Yes.
But what about the 10 cents?
That's, that already happened.
That already happened, okay.
Yeah, that already happened.
We did that in September, start of school.
Okay. But have, so we notified the parents that things were going up 10 cents?
In, that they were going up 10 cents? In, we didn't, the reason that we divided it is because we didn't feel there was enough time.
Right, but what I'm wondering is, if we told them about the 10 cents, did we already tell them about the 15 cents?
Yes, yes.
So now we got to come back and say, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, we made a mistake. It's going to go 25. Which is, that was my, I don't, I just don't think there's enough time to let parents know. But that's just me. So, any other questions? Roll call? Candy?
Tracy Bricky?
No.
Tom LaLiberty?
No.
Melissa Muzzi?
No.
Jessica Wheeler Russell?
No.
Laura Vincent?
Nope.
David Nesbit?
No.
Julia Jones?
No.
Stacy Jarvis?
No.
Lorna Carlisle?
No.
Amanda York?
Yes.
She said yes. So the motion failed. It will still be 15 cents going up in January.
Yep, so go into what was said earlier about notice and everything. And I don't know how the timing works with your formulas or your tool, but I would suggest you do it sooner than June. People will be on vacation shortly thereafter. And I would just do it all at once, and I say what, I would encourage you to consider what Sam recommends, because I would say it's going to probably be 50, 60 cents, somewhere in that ballpark. But raising that up does create more revenue, and as you look at your budget development for FY '28, that's more revenue and that's less money you're asking the community to raise, so.
And I would be interested, too, to know, I know that the last time we looked at what schools the same size as us are charging. I'd be interested to know that, too.
Can we revisit it in like May?
We can, we can revisit it in, yep, April or May.
Can I add that similar in need and size? Because we have socioeconomic...
Oh, in need and size, right.
Which is important.
Yes.
Did you have something?
Well, I was just going to say, the socioeconomic numbers are going to be based on free and reduced lunch applications. So the families, families are requesting those resources.
They're up. The price is going to go up. If that's available, I would love to see that.
Yeah.
Is there a time?
Amanda?
Is there a time constraint that they can apply for that?
They can apply anytime.
So they can apply anytime of year?
Yep, and they should.
Okay.
Because there are some, and I think that, that's a really good question. I think that people don't know that, you know, a lot of families might have people who get laid off in the wintertime. They can apply for free and reduced lunch just in the wintertime. And as soon as they feel they're able to get back on, you know, and not need it, then they can go off it. So, but it is, it is, it's important that people know that they can apply at any time and...
Yeah, that's my question.
Yeah.
If we do, even if the 15 cent was to impact people, they...
Right, yes.
If they qualify, they can still apply. It's not just a fall.
I wonder if that's something that, you know, we should put, we should have the principals put in their smores.
I can tell you, it's in the Pennycook one, because I see it every week.
Uh-huh, okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, next is manifest and journal entries. Melissa and I have signed them, and I, you all looked at them, and Julia? And I need a motion to accept the manifest and journal entries. Julia, second?
Second.
Seconded by Laura. Any questions about the manifest journal entries? Yes, Lorna?
So on the, under special education, the 1210 line, when it says tuition, is that for our out-of-district students?
So the...
The manifests.
On the manifests and journal entries? Those are the ones that you see on, online?
Okay, I thought that's where I printed this off.
Oh, did you print it? Oh, then you printed it, no problem. I'm sorry. I was like, wait, I don't have that.
Lorna, could you just tell, say that, which one it was again?
So again, it's under 1210 special education, and it says tuition, and I'm just, does that mean for out-of-district students? Because it's under special education? I mean, I'm just confused by, because it says tuition.
Uh-huh, so it would be for out-of-district? Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Other questions? All right, all those in favor of the manifest and journal entries, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay. Next is Board Chair Report. I just want to remind everybody that the SAU Board Meeting is here Wednesday at 6:00, right? 6:00 PM. And the other thing I wanted to say is, I got to see the fifth graders at Pennycook Elementary School today at the State House, and they were great. They were so well-behaved, and they asked me all sorts of questions as their representative. So it was great. It was really, really good to see them. Thanks. Assistant Super Report.
So I am pleased to report that the Merrimack Valley School District has been selected to receive two national grants from the Public School District's Opioid Recovery Trust, the District Improvement Grant, and the Model Program and Best Practices Grant. Merrimack Valley is the only district in New Hampshire chosen in this highly competitive first round of awards. The Public School District's Opioid Recovery Trust awarded grants to 39 school districts nationwide for a total of 51 grants aimed at helping schools address the ongoing and devastating impact of the opioid crisis on students and families. The trust received applications from 34 states and making our district selection especially meaningful. So the trust's mission is centered on supporting students most affected by the opioid epidemic. This includes students born with neonatal opioid withdrawal syndrome, students with special education needs linked to early opioid exposure, at-risk learners, and students harmed by substance abuse. Each grant does come with mandatory requirements to ensure accountability and that the funds supplement, not supplant, existing resources, as that's pretty typical with our grants. MVSD's two awards will support a coordinated set of initiatives designed to strengthen academic, behavioral, and social-emotional systems throughout the district. So some of, just some of these activities include hiring a BCBA, a Board Certified Behavior Analyst, to expand our MTSSB supports, purchasing a 14-passenger van to improve student access to programs and services, enhancing after-school STEM opportunities, implementing responsive classroom district-wide to support SEL and positive learning environments, providing professional development for school counselors, expanding trauma-informed practices and training. So the estimated total for the awards for this year are 250,000. These awards represent a significant and targeted investment in our students, particularly those who have been most impacted by the opioid crisis. And so we're certainly very grateful for this opportunity extended to us through the Public School District's Opioid Recovery Trust. And we are looking forward to some of these additions that I just described to our programming.
That is fabulous.
Yeah, and I want to give a shout-out to Becky Kennedy, who really did the hard work to get us this grant. So, thank you.
Can you say what BCCI stands for?
BCBA, Board Certified Behavior Analyst. Yes.
Was that for the next school year, for 2020?
No, that is for this, this school year, yep. And we may, there's the potential that there's future opportunities for us as well.
Oh, fabulous.
Nice.
Lorna?
One grant or two grants?
It's two different, it's two grants.
Lorna?
Is, I assume that we get that 14-passenger van, it's going to be restricted just to that program's use?
Um, yeah, I mean, we're going to have a specific targeted purpose for that. That's not to say that in a pinch, we can't drive it to pick up and drop off, as we've sometimes done before.
Other questions for Catherine? Do you have anything else? Randy?
The SAU Board Meeting is at 6:30 tomorrow. I mean, Wednesday. Tomorrow, I'm crossing off the list because it's a snow day. In case you didn't check your email or your text. So calling off snow days the night before is definitely the best possible way to call a snow day. So not trying to make that call at 4:00 in the morning, so I appreciate the timing of the storm. So thank it tomorrow when you're waving to it.
When you're outside.
Yes, yes.
That's why we have snowing.
So I just want to put something on your radar. We talked about it in Finance, and so just a quick little preview, but one of the things that we're trying to do this year is a website, is a dashboard of, is sort of a menu of different things that have to do with the budget or just about the district as a whole. And as part of that, we're trying to do some things other than a spreadsheet and information. We got the, we got the word from folks that they don't like spreadsheets as much as Sam and I do. So we're trying to branch out. We have videos and infographics and some sort of summary pages and things like that, so, and we're going to, we're going to start launching those. So those of you that get the building-level communications at the end of the week, you'll start seeing some of those links to this dashboard with, you know, you kind of choose your own adventure. Do you want to watch the video? Do you want to see an infographic on whatever that topic is for that week? And then we'll keep them all sort of collecting so that you can go back and watch them all and make a playlist and all of those things that you might do with this information. We hope that that's a, just a more approachable way for people to get some of this information about the budget and about certain aspects of the budget. So food service, we already have a video, an infographic for some of them. We're going to do some audio clips and, you know, so we have special ed funding, and we have special ed transportation. So there'll be a number of different things, and we're hoping that that gets out to more people, so we have a more informed group when they, when they come to vote in March. So be on the lookout for that. Thank you.
Can I ask a one question, or two questions? You said that they're going to be sent out in smores, which is great, but I assume it'll also be readily accessible on the website, kind of similar to where it is for folks who aren't in the building.
Yeah, we're going to try, I mean, there'll be links, and, you know, it's going to be the same link, but we're going to change the look. Every time you click, it's going to be a different leading topic.
Awesome.
So right now, it's the special ed aid shortfall is the first thing on the site. Has not been launched yet. We're trying to do a bit of a marketing plan to get things out with how we're releasing it, instead of just saying, hey, there's a bunch of stuff there.
Great.
Go look at it, because that's really been what we've done in the past. We've had people say, I can't find the information. Well, it's all been there. Every year, we have line item budget, we have function budget, we have the cost drivers, we have all of those things, but there are tabs on a spreadsheet, and they were there for months, and, you know, I don't know how many clicked. So we're trying a new approach, and we're hoping that more clicks, more likes, please subscribe.
Thank you. Okay, so we are going into non-public...
Public comments.
Oh, yep, yep. So before we do that, let's have some public comments, shall we?
Good evening. Louise Andrews from Salisbury. I'm here tonight representing the taxpayers of the Merrimack Valley School District in transparency. I have two requests. I understand last month, when you were talking about the Washington Street School, a study had been done on alternatives for the Merrimack Valley Learning Center. I would like a copy of that study, because I have a picture here of the alternative, and I would like that study to be put online. The second request is, in May of 2022, and all these are facts that have come from minutes of meetings, the board voted to spend up to $30,000, it wasn't to exceed it, on a study of the Washington Street School. On October 2nd, 2023, a preliminary was given to the Facilities Committee from EEI, who had done a study on Washington Street School. And in that study, and I, you know, how extensive it is, you're gonna find out, and you don't even know about it. They said that to update the school, it would cost between 10 and 14 million dollars. The board voted to, I take, to have somebody else do a study. Now, we paid to this EEI, we have, I have an invoice, for $22,600. I asked for a copy of that study then, never got one. I asked one about 10 days ago, and I was informed I could not have a copy of that study because it had never been presented to the school board. I am requesting that that be brought to the school board and approved, so that me and everybody else can view that study. Now, I've been through the Vanwell information. I am not against the Merrimack Valley Learning Center, but I've been through every, all this information. We have no real concept of what it's gonna cost to update that Washington Street School. There's no plan. It's like we're gonna wing it for the next seven to 10 years, and what we can fix, good, and what we can't, we aren't going to. That is the wrong way of doing things. And what I would like to ask, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna take this action further, this whole situation should be taken before the people. All the information should be given to them, and let them vote what they want to do. Because I have a big question, this, none of this information I've read, and that is, what are we gonna do about the asbestos in that school? I understand that if it doesn't, isn't exposed, then we just turn our backs and forget it, which...
Louise? I guess is okay. That's three minutes, please.
But I'm almost done.
Thank you.
Otherwise, if it is exposed, what's it gonna cost us? There is so much not known about this. I really don't know how the school board ever voted to continue to spend money on that school, because there's so much missing information.
Thank you, Louise, thank you. Other? Public comment? So, now we are gonna go into non-public, under RSA 91A3, Roman numeral 2B. We will be taking action when we come back from non-public. So, it is a roll call. Candy?
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Sorry, no, I'm sorry.
I know, I really am.
Yeah. Candy?
I got it.
Okay.
I'm fine.
Thank you.
Tracy Bricki?
Yes.
Tom La Liberty?
So, just what's the exemption rule? What is it for? Is it for hiring?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, RSA... I said B, right?
Yeah, you gotta, I just wanted to make sure I understood that it was for hiring.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Melissa Muzzi?
Yes.
Jessica Wheeler Russell?
Yes.
Laura Vincent?
Yes.
David Nesbit?
Yes.
Julia Jones?
Yes.
Stacy Jarvis?
Yes.
Lorna Carlisle?
Yes.
Amanda York?
Yes.